Good evening, everyone. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please, and then follow by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. McInde, roll call, please.
Mayor Grieschek, Mr. Hizzy.
Here.
Mr. Poach.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Crutt.
Here.
Mr. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Biondo.
Here.
Mr. Graziani.
Here.
Mr. Ratcher.
Here.
Ms. Rock.
Here.
Mr. Hugus.
Here.
Mr. Sedlack.
Here.
Mr. Weldon.
Here.
Mrs. Lein.
All right, folks, good evening and welcome to our Municipal Monroeville Citizens Night here for Tuesday, July the first. Proceed through onto the regular agenda, our Citizens Night meeting first as well. Open up the beginning of this right now for comments on any municipal items related to anything that's in place. Now, we will have a five-minute time limit on all of these normal comments. To do that, you'll have to enter and sign in as well, please, to do that, too. So who do we have available and has signed in to speak already?
Let me bring it up for you.
Yes, please.
I think there's somebody in front of me. There's a bunch of people.
If you come forward to state your name, and again, if you be sure you've signed in as well.
Yeah, she did.
And that you're a Monroeville resident, please.
Good evening. My name is Mrs. Stephanie Hill. I have come this evening. This is my first council meeting. I've lived here for 30 years and worked here for 40. I am coming representative of my neighborhood. We live near Pioneer Park, and as of the past two weeks, we've had various incidents early morning where people have attempted to break into our vehicles. My neighbors have asked me to come and represent them and ask, going forward, is there a protocol in which we can request surveillance or a drive-through by our police department during the early hours?
You just did.
Thank you very much. Can I have one more question?
Yes, ma'am. You have four minutes left. Take your time.
I'm not going to take four minutes.
Welcome.
I promise you. I would, my second question is in charge of the clearance for our parade floats. Is there a committee or is there an organizer? I'm asking that question because this past Memorial Day, we had our parade. My granddaughters are part of the Gateway Band, and they have been for the past three years. I'm so proud of my girls, and they are very excited to represent us again on Friday. This past Memorial Day, we had a float that was labeled the Hillbillies. I don't know if you all will remember.
Swimmers.
They were actually in outhouses. Did anyone notice that on their float, there was a Confederate flag?
Ma'am, our Director of Parks and Recreation Liaisons with the Fourth, they do that, too, and they'll, I'm not aware of that as well, but they'll speak to it.
Okay, those were my questions. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Ma'am, one thing, that wasn't our parade. The Legion puts on that parade.
That was the Legion?
Our parade is on Friday.
Okay, I will let them, I will let my neighbors know.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I appreciate your time.
All right. And you can, Mr. Slock, speaking of.
Thank you. I don't know of that float being in our parade, but I'll definitely check it. You can have my card. I'll just take a few minutes of your time. I just wanted to stop in. We had a lot going on here, and I appreciate you a few minutes to give me. Just in regards to the Recreation and Parks Department, I mean, it's just, it's off and running. I mean, it's just an amazing summer so far. Unfortunately, it really set us back on a few things, but, I mean, the public works staff has just been incredible to help us get our camps going and finding different locations for us to hide during this rain. But we've been very successful. Things are going great, and I greatly appreciate everybody's help. Just real brief, too, the concert series are going amazing. We just had one on Sunday. We had over 500 people there. It was House of Soul. There's been a lot of positivity from that, so that was amazing thing. All of our concerts are, you know, are off and running. Our Wednesday acoustic thing is going very well, too. Our last one, we had around 35 people, 40. That's on a Wednesday. It's only an hour, hour and a half, so we don't expect big crowds there, but it's a nice evening. I would encourage you to come up if you can to see that. We just recently, last month, had a block party up at Evergreen Park, and as I'm talking here, I greatly appreciate Councilman Biondo coming. We had some other people that showed up. We actually had a nice little softball game going on. The mayor's daughter was a part of one of the teams, one of Paul's staff. Pete Griffin was there, a couple of police officers. Barbecue, I mean, what we were lacking was wind, cold rain. But I would say we had over 100 people there. I just wanted to thank Councilman Biondo for coming and doing that, and for everybody. The next one will be in July over at Overlook Park. We're looking forward to that one, so, again, very successful. I don't know if you want to say anything about it.
Yeah, I mean, I thought it was great. I mean, even with the weather like Paul said, I mean, we had wind, rain. I mean, it was, anything that you wouldn't expect in the summer, it happened that day. I actually had to go home. I mean, I walk, I live a couple of doors down from the park. I went home and got a sweatshirt because it was that cold that night. But we had a great, there was a food truck there, the fire department showed up, they showed off the fire truck and the police car. Officer Ratcher was there, and it was, it was a really, it was, it was great, even with the weather.
Yeah. So I greatly appreciate that. So this weekend, I just want to give you guys an update on a few things. We have a lot going on. I think it's important, again, we'll show a quick video after this. I'll just run through these real quick. We actually had the Army reach out to us, and this Thursday, the Army 28th Infantry Division Band will be performing at the amphitheater on Thursday at 6:00. It's a free event. They're actually currently in Harrisburg, leaving Harrisburg, coming to Altoona, and then from Altoona, they're coming to Monroeville. They're going to start setting up around 1:00. They're an 85-piece band, and they're going to be doing all patriotic things. It's a free event. I would encourage you to get a beautiful night. I think we're going to get through this rain after tomorrow morning, and I'd really encourage everybody to please try to attend that. Following that, obviously, Friday morning, Candy in Toe, the band, we will have the parade starting at 9:00, the Miracle Mile. Again, the people that are involved in this, I just can't appreciate what they're doing right now for this. So it starts at 9:00, runs down from the Miracle Mile down to the Bull of 22, turns Monroeville Boulevard and in front of the Convention Center. Currently, we are at 85 units. 85 units, and Joey will tell you that 85 units doesn't mean it's 85 pieces. It means probably 300. So we're looking forward to that. That evening, we are cleared to go at the Monroeville Mall behind Going, Going, Gone for the fireworks. That will happen right around 9:15. We'll be showing this live on YouTube and also on our couple of channels. Jared will be posted up on top of the mall. So that's going to be pretty cool for him. And then on Sunday, we finish up with the East Wind Symphony, East Wind Symphonic Band, all patriotic melodies, Sunday, July 6th. It's a special time from 3:00 to 5:00. They are a 75-piece symphonic band. They will be there to perform, and we're really looking forward to that. So it's an active weekend, but the parade is going to be a big thing.
Paul, were we able, excuse, I didn't want to interrupt you, but were we able to obtain the garbage cans and?
Yeah, so we've got waste management to donate 20 boxes for our use.
So do people understand why we're doing this? Last year, we had a mess out on 22nd. To put the garbage in the cans and Public Works to just run up there real quick, pick ups, pick everything up and get it off the road. Even Paul will have the sweeper to follow to get the candy off of 22.
So, yeah, we were to get those donated. I picked them up and I dropped them over at the Public Works this morning. I did not approach Mr. Hugus about putting them out, but I appreciate you taking that step and doing that for me to avoid me.
I remember it.
Yeah, so I appreciate it.
What time is the last event, Paul?
It's 3:00 to 5:00 o'clock on Sunday. Okay? So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul. Well done.
Well, you just made it.
Anyone else that signed up to speak this evening, still on any Monroeville item?
Okay.
You and Dr. Beck.
Hi, men and women.
One tonight.
I'm sorry. I couldn't resist. So I've just been showing up to try to educate all of us a little bit about the potential for the reimagined Monroeville Mall development. And I have concerns right now because we, the community, have been promised, we, the community, have been promised a community meeting. And I don't even watch the news, but a little bird came out tonight at 5:15 and said, Alyssa, turn on the news, Channel 4, because the mayor's going to talk about the update about Monroeville Mall. And the newscaster had two sentences about, I don't know what, because they didn't say very much. And so I just wanted to let the community know that on Friday, July 18th, the community being Mr. Graziani and my councilman, who's acting as mayor today, and all of you, I know you can't all come as council because you can't have a quorum, right? If there's a community meeting, I don't think, but maybe one or two others of you besides my councilperson from 11:00 daytime until 12:30. And Saga, one of the businesses, is going to have students have a preference, then be sure to send a private message to Sustainable Monroeville on Facebook, if you're on Facebook. Let us know what you like, because if it's my choice, it'll be all vegetables. And this is, this is an opportunity. I took nine pages of notes today talking to an architect that was the lead architect on the new Forest Hills Municipal Building, that is, a building that has saved $285,000 since 2018 on energy, because they have a solar array, and the building is positioned in a direction that harvests the most sunshine. And I think that we've reached a point where it's time to consider what will save the community money, community, rather than having citizens who have been very happy, presumably with this community, come up here and talk about why we need more police presence in their community because cars are being vandalized. So I'm hoping that a lot of the community shows up on the 18th of July at the Monroeville Public Library and that we have a community discussion. And we are included in the discussion because for beyond sustainable, I'm trying to speak very generally and understandably, I think what everybody knows what sustainable means now, to have a sustainable, community-friendly, play, re-imagination of this mall, we, the citizens, need to be included in the planning from now, not, not at the end of the summer, as they said on the news today, as Mr. Gresok apparently relayed to the news station. I'm, I'm handing the baton also over to the younger people. I think you might be the youngest up there, and you're probably going to be the next mayor, right? We're handing the baton. And, and so you might know something about AI and ChatGPT, and you might know better, and the high school students and the junior high school students might know how to put into ChatGPT or Gemini, how to question them, how to fashion a question. What are you looking for? What are you looking for in this redevelopment? And come with your ideas and suggestions. Shower Cypress Equities and Walmart with our ideas, because Walmart in Arkansas has sustainability going on there, and we want to see at least what they've got for themselves in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beck.
Georgiana Woodhall, and I was hoping to get an update, and I, too, listened to the news before I came briefly.
Just a side note, Georgiana.
Yeah.
It's interesting they say that the mayor, because he's not in town. That's why I'm here.
Well, you know, it's.
I don't, I don't know when that was from. I don't know what that is. Sounds interesting. Sorry, but go ahead.
Well, if you watch the news, it'll probably be on again.
Yeah, I'll check. Thank you.
Got this article out of the newspaper, and it's on the retail expansion. Walmart continues to expand Pittsburgh area footprint with the purchase of the Bethel Park Shopping Center. And it's, retail giant Walmart purchased Bethel Park Shopping Center for $39.6 million in early May, according to real estate records. I'm going to skip, I'm not going to read this because my five minutes will be up. Walmart wants to continue to operate in Bethel Park, and purchasing the store provided the best opportunity to continue severing our customers in the long term, in long term, said Walmart Director of Corporate Communications Mark Rickel in a statement. There are no plans to expand the store. The property's former owner, Texas-based commercial real estate Anthony Tavani Group, bought it under an LLC in 2023 for $31 million. Now, for $39.6 million. Messages left with Giant Eagle's Media Relations Department, as well as Bethel Park, seeking further information, were not immediately returned. In February, Bentonville, Arkansas-based Walmart purchased Monroeville Mall for $34 million and enlisted a Texas-based developer to ship the property into a new retail and commercial destination. This is alarming to me. On Tuesday, The Wall Street Journal reported Walmart planned to lay off 1,500 workers in a U.S. restructuring aimed at trimming its expenses and speeding up a decision-making for the company that says it employs 1.6 million in the U.S. and 2.1 million people worldwide. It operates more than 10,719 countries and reported $165.6 billion revenue in the first quarter of fiscal year. You know, for them to lay off 1,500 people is, to me, is a concern. I mean, we're hoping that, that they're going to be hiring and bringing many jobs, good-paying jobs here to Monroeville. And I, and, you know, it's very concerning to read this, and I went around the mall and I spoke to a couple of people, one, several people in Dick's and at some of these stores. They're pretty much left out in the cold, not knowing what's going to be happening at the mall, and they have a lot of concerns. So, you know, I think that I hate to ask you to step up to the plate and put some pressure to come into council chambers or share what their plan is, because we're hearing everything, and I know that the mayor said, oh, you know, this is a rumor, that's a rumor. I'm going to, I'm going to leave this with you, because there's an article in here on Dick seeks to reassure its investors with the acquisition of Foot Locker. And nobody wants to run with rumors, but, and I'm going to leave this for you all. So this is when Walmart in 2010 considered the Monroeville Mall space, when boss costs moved out. So I'm just going to submit this, and I'm going to just say that from the time they put that shovel in the ground, I can tell you that there are going to be people closely watching what's going on there at the mall, and especially with the workers that they're hiring because of things that have happened in the past. And so I would hope that our council, as I said, please step up to the plate, because, you know, when, when there's silence, and it's Stephanie, and people say, we don't know this, we don't know that, it is really a concern. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Do you need these back?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else, anyone else interested on any other topics that we have this evening? Great, okay, then we'll close our Citizens Night at this point. This moves to another section on the, on the agenda, conditional use in public hearing as well for next group, and I'm going to turn the, since it's a public hearing, I'm going to turn this over to our solicitor, Mr. Ratcher, to be the hearing officer.
Open the public hearing for council?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, go ahead.
This is the public hearing, conditional use public hearing for application 25-4-C Gujar, am I pronouncing that correctly? Gujar Auto, and the applicant is requesting conditional use approval pursuant to Article 5, Section 504, point LLL, vehicle service repair garage of the Monroeville Ordinance Number 2779 to permit the operation of a vehicle repair and service garage. The property's address is 2530 Monroeville Boulevard and identified as tax parcel 639L 059 in the Boulevard zoning district. The applicant represented? You state your name for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Mohsen Iqbal.
Okay, would you raise your right hand, please? I'll swear you in. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Tell us about your application.
So we would like to open a garage at 2530 Monroeville Boulevard. In the last meeting, there were some concerns about the sidewalk that needs to be cleaned up. So we did clean up that sidewalk this weekend. It's completely cleaned up. The other concern was the parking lot, which I think in the last meeting, they have given us timeframe for almost end of the year. So hopefully, we will, you know, try to complete that parking lot also by the end of the year.
So. With, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah.
With respect to your use, is this going to be a general automotive repair garage?
Yeah, just, you know, basic oil change, brakes change, nothing major like.
Not like auto body stuff?
No, no, no.
Which seems to make more noise than just a regular garage. Yeah. What kind of hours of operation?
From 9:00 to 5:00.
9:00 to 5:00, okay. Monday through Friday, weekend hours?
Yeah, Monday to Sunday.
Monday through Sunday?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And when do you plan on, if approved, when do you plan on institute and getting started and opening for business?
Yeah, as soon as we get the, you know, the permit or, you know, the conditional use, we will be opening.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, how many employees are you going to have?
Two employees.
Okay, two employees. The signage is, will comply with the municipality's requirements?
Yeah, whatever the, you know, the rules and regulations, we try to comply with those.
Okay.
You know, the signage, yeah.
Mr. Weldon, any, any issues from zoning?
No, aren't too big concerns with the sidewalk and the asphalt. They're, they're in pretty bad shape. The sidewalk has been addressed. It does look a lot better, so once the asphalt gets repaired or replaced, it'll, it'll really help out.
Okay.
And just for a location, this is the old Waldman Motors. A lot of people know it as Waldman Motors.
Yeah. Across from the Dairy Queen.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Counsel, have any questions?
None.
Question for engineering. As you know, Jamison Lane's been flooded numerous times. Is there any stormwater changes that are necessary, are able to be done?
No, we're proposing any changes to the site, so we can't institute the stormwater ordinance. Now, if they were expanding the asphalt or something, we could, you know, get a detention tank or something in there, but they're pretty much just using it as it is.
So it's kind of grandfathered in then till they change something? Okay.
And is that the same with, like, the parking, too, then? Because there's no, I mean, there's no parking, I know that this was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting, but there's no, like, parking, there's no lines for, like, parking spots or anything like that?
And that, and that will be addressed when they repair, replace the asphalt. There, the old, the original site plan had some parking spaces. There's like a piece of gabrel on the back. There were some parking spaces over there and closer to Jamison, so those will be restriked.
When is the timeline for the parking lot to get repaired?
We asked to have it done by Thanksgiving, I believe.
Yeah, end of the year, yeah, December.
And if they don't?
It'll, it'll be a violation of the approval resolution, the approval resolution, because it's, it's actually in the resolution right now. If you look, I think it's the last two items.
In other words, that's the shutdown until?
We, we could, yes.
And you are the owner?
Yes.
Are you going to be offering vehicles for sale there?
No. Just basically, you know.
Are you also one of the two employees?
Uh, no.
How about inspections?
We haven't decided yet, no, nothing yet. We start with small first, and then we'll see how it goes, you know? It's our first experience with an auto garage. See how it goes.
When was the last time that place was, had something?
Oh, it's been a while.
Been a while. Been a while.
Been a long time. Counsel, have any other questions?
Sounds good to get back in the room.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to ask a question or give testimony regarding this matter? I don't see anybody coming forward, so we'll say none. Sir, this will be acted upon this coming Tuesday.
Okay.
So that is the time. You should be here. We'll have a vote on it at that time.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
You need a motion to close?
Yes, please.
Make a motion to close the hearing? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearings.
You have the gavel back.
I do.
Sometimes.
Thank you. All right. Application, close our public hearing. What else we have interesting this evening? Yep.
Good day, guys.
All right, so next week, we'll vote on approval for the minutes of meetings. It'll be the Citizens Night meeting of June 3rd of 2025, Council's Work Session meeting of June 3rd of 2025, and Council's Regular Meeting of June 10th, 2025. Those will be submitted next week for approval, and we'll vote on at that time. And, yeah, I was going to get to that, too. So any other questions on them as they stand now? Okay, we'll vote on that on Tuesday. Down here, next thing on the item here is our reports, our tax collections, our green sections here. Any questions from council on the important question in the tax collection? Okay, no question. We'll look for acceptance and approval next Tuesday. On our list of bills, budgets, transfers, and our payroll, the list of bills for June, any questions on those?
I have a question.
Yes, Mike.
Eric, you find it here. I noticed on our people's gas bill, we have a list of gas bills for each building we have, comes out to about $1,870, but we also have a supplier, and Alex or someone could look into it. It's UGI Enterprises, and they supply all of our buildings, and that's over $2,500.
So you're looking at it?
Well, first of all, it's June. It's the bill for June, and we really, you know, the only place for gas is the senior center's kitchen, and I know the boiler system runs at the library. But I just want to know why we have this supplier, if it's something that we could just directly, this could build from people's gas.
Okay, we, we shall look into it. Thank you, sir. Anything else on our list of the payroll for June? Any questions on that? Okay, we'll look to vote for approval on that on next Tuesday. Alex, I think you're up. Very soon. So for the building applications here in our orange section and stuff?
Yeah, subdivision 25-3-SUB, James and Singrid Hawkins subdivision approval. Applicant is requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval pursuant to Monroeville subdivision Land Development Ordinance Number 2521. Parcels 638-J-090 into two lots. The newly created lot 1 is to be combined with tax parcels 638-E-068 for a total lot area of 3.21 acres. Proposed lot 2 will have a total area of 3.161 acres. The properties are located in the R2, single multifamily and S conservancy zoning districts. And of course, as is normal to get to this point, the planning commissioner has reviewed and recommends approval of this application, and I.
See, the applicants are here for a presentation. Could you state your names and?
I'm Sigrid Hawkins.
Evening.
And I'm John Silvestri, representing my personal trust. I'm also representing Sigrid and her husband.
Welcome to you all.
We are the co-owners of the property.
Welcome, welcome.
Before I go to the plan, I just wanted to orient.
Before I go to the plan, I just wanted to orient.
A little bit more there's, yeah, that way, let's give that a try. Okay? And Jared will zoom in on it here. Let's see if we can get that zoomed in on.
Yes, I can.
It's coming to you?
Hope we can do both at the same time.
Why don't we try one? I don't think the, the scope of the camera, let's try one if we can, please.
Okay.
Jared can get in on that as close as he can. Okay, great.
This is an excerpt of a Monroeville zoning map. And the property that we're subdividing is this area that is this gold triangle and the green triangle, the square here. It's approximately five acres. The gold touches upon Sigrid and Jim's property. They are right here. They also own this lot here. And the idea is for them, and I own this property here, but it's now subdivided last year. So, it's really two lots.
You appeared to work last year.
Yes. So, the idea is that we're expanding our ownership to create privacy. So, the subdivision line is along the zoning line. What will be in my extended backyard will be S conservancy. What will be in Sigrid and Jim's extended backyard will be R-two. So, Northern Pike is up here, and when you see the development plan, the street, the plan of lots, it includes all of these lots where Sigrid and Jim are located. So, that you have the full perspective if you go south from the property. This is an Allegheny County block and lot map. As you go south, you see that the Dodge Chrysler dealership is here in William Penn Highways. And this particular map is an aerial view. And without admitting to trespassing, I will say that it's a wonderful walk to come off of this property, go around through here, see some gas wells, see some deer, see some roundhogs, and come out here and then walk down Northern Pike to get that.
Okay.
The plan itself, I did not know whether I'd be coming with worry or happiness. And I am coming with happiness because I got a, an email from Joseph Story that said he was sending surveyors to find the exact location of a storm, not a stormwater, a sanitary sewer line. And what was throwing us off is that there was no meets and bounds or easement description in the records when he took over as the manager. And the information that he had, had a sewer line here, and my surveyor, our surveyor, guestimated it, which you can see on the plan. And what I learned today, when I went out in the rain and put on the surveyor, I mean, it's great to hit the ground and actually see what's going on, is that that sewer is really over here, and that'll slightly change the route on the subdivision plan. The plan that I'm showing you today is updated from the one that the planning commission had. The county wanted additional information as to ownership here, a check on meets and bounds as to this private right-of-way, and all of that has been done. I also caught two typo errors here that have been corrected. What I also have to offer is the, our surveyor's letter to the second wave of Allegheny County comments embedded in the letter are the comments. I also have the proposed resolution for approval. All of the conditions are acceptable. I understand that there will be another condition on showing the easement for what we will come to know, the real course and path of the, of the sanitary sewer line. And is there anything else? I don't think so.
Okay.
I let him do all the talking.
He's done it before, I think. Yes, ma'am, yeah, I did do that. Counsel, questions? In your neighborhood, Mr. Williams?
Go back to your other picture.
Which one?
The one with the-
The first one or the-
The second, I think, first or second picture.
The aerial view?
Yeah, the aerial view.
This one?
I don't know, they've got, no, the one before that.
There you go.
No, you got that right-of-way there, that road, but it stops at the line. How's this one property not going to be landlocked unless you extend that road to give them access to it?
What we have done on the plan, let me move it so that it's centered here, is from Iva Street, there is a twenty-five-foot easement that Lot One is granting to Lot Two. You also see another easement in a triangle here. That's an easement that Lot Two gives to Lot One, so there'll be access to the sanitary sewer system.
Okay, thank you. This is my question.
You are welcome.
What are you going to build your house?
We have a design, and we have to do the mechanics. It's going slow. What I'm loving about this is understanding the property, what's growing there, how to recultivate it. I have built a twenty-five-foot lattice on the hillside, and instead of growing invasive species, I'm experimenting with other species. It's fun.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, any other questions? Mr. Wilton, any questions? Anyone else have any questions in the audience, or in that? All right, so we'll look to act on that again on Tuesday. All right. Thank you all. See you then. Okay, subdivision, we discussed our conditional use and approval. Again, um-
That'll be Tuesday.
Yeah, it'll be on Tuesday. You get to do that.
The motions.
This one?
Three motions on the agenda for next week, just reviewing those. One is to reschedule the Citizens Night Meeting to Thursday, August seventh, because of National Night Out, so hopefully everybody makes it to National Night Out, which will be at Community Park West on August fifth. And then a motion to advertise the ordinance related to civil service rules and regulations. Civil Service has made some suggested amendments to their regulations, and included in those will be a part dedicated to the new commander position, which is now currently being advertised. This is a new non-union position here in the community of Monroeville, and it will be, in essence, a second-in-command under Chief Cole. Chief obviously is outside the union as well, and this will be an additional non-union salary employee. We're working with the Pennsylvania Police Chiefs Association to hire that position, and again, it's being advertised, and applicants are coming in as we speak as well. And then, we will also have a motion next week to advertise for an ordinance to adopt the five-year capital improvement program that I'll be discussing in a few moments.
Any questions on those motions from anyone in the audience? Okay, we'll close. Thank you, sir, and we'll look forward to those on Tuesday. All right, Mr. Graziani, there, you're number eleven.
Thanks.
Talk about the capital improvement plan.
Thanks to staff and the council for all the hard work they put into this. Each time I've met with counsel, I've learned new things about how this can maybe make some sense, and we're just going to not take as long as we did last time. Wanted to be from this position, just simply so I can address the, and see my staff. Very, very grateful to be able to talk to you this evening and present, which has been a culminating of a lot of work, including going back to last year with Mrs. Rock efforts to, to help get the AccuFund up-to-date with our assets and all of the staff who made sure that the assets were properly included in AccuFund. There's just so many things I would like to do and be able to think, but we'll just get through the presentation as quickly as possible. So, I've listened to counsel. It's pretty obvious, you have a desire at this point for no new debt and no new taxes. So, the five-year program is presented, is reflective of that value. We had a goal to keep in mind that in twenty-thirty-one, the fund balance for the general fund would not be below forty percent. So, we had to do revenue and expenditure projections for this year, for the next five years, and then do an additional one for year six, which would be twenty-thirty-one. And this is a floor that we would not go under. So, we did not want to spend our balances below so that we would start twenty-thirty-one and be in the hole, just being prudent. So, everything's kind of like working backwards from there. And of course, it's the price tag. The price tag is a forty-five million dollar program, which is this year and then the five years. So, it's kind of got a one A and a one B, and it ends in twenty-thirty. The good news is, it's fully funded this year and fully funded next year. And as we go into projecting, fully funded for twenty-twenty-seven. Of course, twenty-twenty-seven's a little cloudier because you're dealing with projections. You're getting through a year that you don't know what's going to happen to a year that you're not even sure it's going to happen. So, we all live with a lot of uncertainty, and you can relate why that's important. In total, the plan is presented, is covering about seventy-two percent of the request. If we can, by grants and other means, acquire the things that we have on the list in the five years, each year that we adopt the capital plan, some things will slide into twenty-thirty-one, and others may be in the five-year plan and might not get done till twenty-thirty-two or thirty-three. And again, that's just a factor of paying as you go and with resources you have. And of course, I don't know what a council will do three years from now or four years from now. They might make decisions related to debt or to taxes that we're not able to anticipate at this point. So, if you know what's on this slide, you pretty much know all you need to know. Fully funded, no new debt, no new taxes. We are going to start twenty-thirty, if we work out well, to twenty-thirty-one, January with, that's double what we've been kind of accustomed to here, which is ten percent. But we'll get to more of that a little later. Thanks to great pictures of our wonderful Public Works, they give me physical imagery of what this is about, which this is a fiscally grounded proposal. It's constrained by the resources that we have now. This is at the Public Safety Training Center, Public Works Crew putting in a foundation. Think of a, a train, if you will. The engine of the train in Monroeville is the general fund, which is what you adopt every December, and the capital's just a, a car on the train. If the general fund that's passed in December has a different allotment to the capital, the general fund is lead. It determines what the capital gets. It's the funding source for the capital primarily. Yeah, we'll pursue alternative resources, but it's the general fund. So, that is important. We're doing all this to be transparent, so people know what we're up to and, and really to do the best for the citizens here. Another great picture of Public Works here, it's about the foundation to build on. We will do this annually. We will be disciplined, and we'll be a best practice model community with our capital fund. Presentation will cover these topics with a little bit more detail. Home rule charter is important because it's the rules we're to live by, and we've chosen that as a home rule to have those imposed upon us through years we've done it, and we're going to go back to doing that. Talk about our goals, Monroeville by the numbers, look at the CIP, and then again, hope you guys vote on it in August and approve it. Won't take a lot of the time here, but basically, in May, you had a presentation on lots of handouts on that. June, you had a presentation on the big two, which will not be included in this plan. We made that very clear at the meeting, but you needed to understand that we've been discussing for years, both expanding the library and possibly potentially relocating, relocating the Public Works facility. And those are not in that plan as we see it now, but I just want to make sure you understand that. And again, today is about the plan. It's really about what's in your wallet, is what we're looking at today. It's the final piece of a puzzle. Several slides in the home rule charter, this, of course, was adopted twenty years after we became a borough, you know, from patent township in the seventies, this was adopted, and it's been amended. Most recently, the voters voted to amend it to allow the manager to have the ability to not live in Monroeville, add additional requirements for the manager's hiring. Has specific requirements for a capital budget. Most communities don't have those requirements because they're not home rule requirements. The Pennsylvania code related to the borough code, second class, first-class townships do not have a requirement to adopt a capital budget. You do, and we're doing it. And so, there are rules in there. Will take a lot of time through these. You can read the slides. You have copies of the presentation. For those of you in the audience and in the public, these are already online. They can be downloaded and read. You'll have the video to back it up, and including the three-hundred-and-eight-page thick binder that some of them, you can see on their, on the desks. So, there's a three-hundred-page report and a ninety-eight-slide slide deck, and they're downloadable and for your review. Summary of the capital budget is outlined in the home, and so we tried to follow that. We'll publish it, which it already is, and I just mentioned that. We'll have a hearing at that August seventh meeting to review and have comment on the capital budget, and then we will look to adopt it. So, stay tuned for the hearing. And each year, we'll be make, you know, if you look at the deadline, it's before September, and we're meeting that deadline. September is when we begin the general fund. We'll be done with that by the beginning of November. It will be adopted in December, like it always is done, so stay tuned for that.
Mr. Graziani, can I ask you a question here?
Yes, of course.
Two, okay. At this point, we talked about counsel. I think, could you go back two slides, please?
Of course, yes, sir.
Two or three to the capital program content? Slide ten? I think so. So, we look at, at the, the bottom part of that. So, now, we've had, if I'm not mistaken, you know, we've lived with the implementation of AccuFund for a while, right?
Yeah.
Josie, I know you've got that in place too. And how that fits into this when we look at the cost of stuff going towards the future? One of the things we talked about last time, you brought up about the size of the fleet and whatnot, which I'm sure is in here, of things that we have, but how can we take, use, how does AccuFund work and relate to us figuring out what we want to spend capital projects on into the future?
I'll just simply say, when we do the general fund budget, Josie gets the AccuFund ready by adding the additional years.
You might want to explain what it, what it is, even to my understanding.
AccuFund is, for those of you who have small businesses, you might be familiar with QuickBooks. That's a name of a software to me. And AccuFund's a little bit more horsepower and designed for local governments. And so, the department head, simply for the general fund, once they get the green light from Josie, they go ahead and fill out portions of their budget that they have control over. Finance takes care of the taxes, the, because of the union contracts, salaries. Now, we get feedback of overtime requirements from department heads. Similarly, because of the hard work of Josie and staff, we'll be able to do that with capital. One of the things we were able to accomplish in twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five was all of the capital assets are now appropriately accounted for within the AccuFund system. And the way this was built was a model that next year will be a little bit simpler. You'll still have to get quotes, you'll still have to update things, you know, what you've purchased and what you want to purchase. But to build the capital budget next year, we've made a massive quantum leap, I would say, this year. Is that helpful?
Yeah, it just gives us to see for capital purchase in the future, is things are starting to lose value, you know, be in the, in the inventory for a period of time, and help us to then look forward.
Yeah, one of the things that, that we'll visit a couple of times this evening, and we've already discussed a number of times since purchasing the Monroeville Convention Center, is the, built up the, the general fund balance. And the reason that has occurred over time is we've basically did a pay-as-you-go, a bit of pay-as-you-breaks capital improvement program, which you'll see in some slides, resulted in almost a hundred percent fund balance. And if I was a taxpayer, I might wonder if we've got enough money in the bank, maybe you don't need all those taxes. Well, that wasn't the reality. Reality is, we have pent-up capital purchases and deferred capital maintenance that we're, we're trying to catch up. Do that in the number of slides.
And I had something here.
Yes, ma'am, please.
When you, when you were mentioning how, about how do we realize going forward? The advantage of having all the capital assets in the software is it'll record depreciation, and you'll be able to see the book value of the assets. So, you know, they'll be able to look and see what the, how much the vehicles have depreciated on the books compared to, you know, the, the physical. And so, that's, that's just one way.
That can be an element, that, we can add that in if we, we've talked about spreading the entire fleet management, not just, I know we've worked with the fire department on some things as well to the future and everything else across the whole board. So, it's really a simplified approach for all of that.
Yeah.
Okay, great, that's good, that's good. So, I don't know that if everybody was aware of that, you know, and-
No, again, the staff has put a ton of work into this. I'm really appreciative of what they've done. So, quickly getting back to the slides, it'll be slide fourteen, and just want to say, this fits in with mission, vision, values. It's funded with existing resources, no new taxes, no new debt. We've talked a little bit about this. This is really about a twenty-year or more program. Some of our equipment does last longer. Obviously, buildings are built for 40, 50-year lives, and we've talked about life cycles before. But basically, in the, in the model, you can think of the one year is as close to being in concrete as you want. And then the five-year, it's a little bit based on projections and how things will work out and when things can be delivered, all fitting within the 20-year. These slides I will not read to you, but this is an interesting picture because this is the Mellon Plan. Our crew's working on, we had a little microburst, a little tornado touchdown last year. And it was quite a mess, Joe, in your neighborhood.
I think you're in the picture.
I think Joe was there cutting. If you can look in, you'll see him cutting somebody's tree. I don't know if the guy sleeps when stuff like this happens, but these are the principles that we try to have related to the capital plan. Next year's the trifecta. It's the 250th anniversary of America. It's the 75th anniversary of Monroeville. And it's the 70th anniversary of the Eisenhower Interstate System. And if it wasn't for the interstates, there would be no Monroeville as we know it. So it's really interesting that they're all coming together next year. So we had to have a big party. And we talked about maybe even in August, having a bit of a subcommittee, the Fourth of July party, looking or the parade, looking at what do we do to time capsule next year and do some things to celebrate that. I mentioned the Turnpike. If the Turnpike didn't change anywhere else between Irwin and the river, Allegheny River, there wouldn't be Monroeville. But they decided to put it here. And that was really important, right? Because right after that, of course, we're one of the busiest interchanges. We're the busiest in the West. The numbers in the East are pretty massive. The largest interchange is 2.53 million monthly vehicles. And we're about 100 million. So it gives you an idea of the volume of some of those Philadelphia suburban interchanges. But the 376 Parkway East, that was completed, they called it the Monroeville Bypass in the 1960s, about 20 or so years after the Turnpike got to Irwin in the 1940. And eventually got into the 50s into the Monroeville area. And all, all signs lead to Monroeville. I love it. When I drive around the Pittsburgh area, I'm downtown, I'm on, and I see Monroeville that way. We're on the map. Unfortunately, a lot of the stuff was built five decades ago, six decades ago. And it's at the end of its life cycle. It's great when you got a brand-new plan. It's easy to take care of those roads. They were newly paved by the developer. But now, Mr. Hugus, there are his responsibilities. And he's, he's managing life cycle end for some areas, and he's got to do new builds and replacements, and it's very expensive. We went over this in detail. Jack said, look, cleanup day is a reminder of our mission, which is to protect people and property, but it's about our community. And we have a lot of pride in this community. People actually do this throughout the year. They do cleanups on their own. But we have a big cleanup day where we get tons of garbage and we really make the place look great. It's about our vision. This is a beautiful picture of the Tall Trees Amphitheater, by the way. And again, it's about making, keeping this community, making good decisions over the long term. Our values, as we've talked about before, spell out community. I'd really encourage people to read these, but I won't take time to bore you this evening. Now, it's about desired outcomes. And I've talked to some of you recently about the things. You all have kids, and sometimes your kids will think that the chores are getting through the activity. Like, for example, did you run the sweeper? And they're like, I ran the sweeper, but there's Cheerios all over the floor. You completed the activity, but the outcome was not achieved. Get the sweeper and run it again till the Cheerios are off the floor so that we get the outcomes we want. See, we don't look for just activities. We don't exist here in local government just to hire people and to look busy. We do have desired outcomes. So let's look at those desired outcomes and why this matters. Safe, as mentioned this evening. This plane gets us there. What else would we want? But the best maintenance we can possibly do, that costs money, both in fleet and materials and of course, the equipment we maintain in the buildings. Efficient and productive, sustainable, something was mentioned tonight. That's something we look to have. That's a desired outcome of our efforts, accommodating, fiscally responsible. With Josie at the helm, I tell Josie, her superpower is simple. She says and we listen. She doesn't need to say much, but when she says something, we listen.
I don't know about that.
We believe you guys, we believe you.
Informative. For those of you tonight watching on TV, you know, we have a great communications department, and more on that next week. I can't wait till you hear what's going on with our communication department. High quality of life. That's why people come here. It's to live the American. That's what we're trying to do. By the numbers, we're not going to take a long time on this because we've talked about some of these things. This is a massive community. I mentioned before, the commuter adjusted population is the highest ratio in the Pittsburgh region. We have more workers and shoppers coming into Monroeville related to our base population than Cranberry does. We're still a major part of this region in both jobs. We have a community college, we have two major hospitals, you name it, we've got it here in Monroeville. Staffing, we are a service industry. And as you can see by the police and public works staffing, a lot of our employees are involved in that safety, right down the center of the fairway mission, protect people and property. We have many facilities and buildings. We talked about that at length in June. These buildings are obviously maintained by our various departments. The animal control office, just in one year, is taking in animals and about 140, 150 animals last year of the dog and cat variety and other species as well. 60 employees over there at the Public Works. We maintain 157 licensed vehicles that people drive, a part of a 327 engine maintenance program. So when our mechanics are working on things, it could be a small engine, or it could be a tractor, or it could be one of these vehicles. There's a lot of vehicles that we work on. Some of you guys remember, we had a police chief here, as the slides advance, for over almost 40 years. It's incredible. Forty-eight sworn officers currently, five detectives. Started up our K-9 program, second K-9 will be active sometime in August. So look forward to that. 20,000 calls of service annually. It's pretty remarkable. Speaking of calls, we have the fire chiefs here. Thank you, because you put a lot of work into this capital improvement program. And thank you for coming this evening. Over 8,000 calls in that period of 2020 to 24. That's 1,500 calls a day. This is 365 days, seven days a week, 24 hours a day. These calls are coming. Massive amounts. The EMS service that comes out of our fire departments are about 9,8500 calls a year. It's remarkable, the number of calls. Just in total, our dispatch is receiving about over 60,000 calls. People call for all kinds of things, not just the emergency service, but many other things. And our 24/7/365 dispatch answers the calls. Our library, 60 years old. You may not realize this, but it had 25,000 program attendees last year. Over half a million items circulated through online and in, to circulate items. Senior Center, 70,000 visits. 70,000 visits to our senior center. It's remarkable. Park amenities, almost 800 acres of parks. Incredible, 22 parks. Our largest park, of course, is Heritage, but others are closed. Community Park West is not too far behind on acreage. Many parks, many of them are walkable to your neighborhoods and accessible to Monroeville residents and used by regional people. People from all over come and visit those parks. Seven and a half miles of walking trails. And most of the parks have some trail network, whether it's a small loop or larger loop, maintained and paved by our Public Works. The fields are legion. We got all kinds of courts and fields and places to play. Tremendous amounts of facilities. We talk about the parking trails, we have picnic pavilions. Many of these are just gorgeous. Monroeville picnic pavilion at West was in 2011, and it was for a Plum graduate. And I said to my wife, doesn't Plum have pavilions? How come they're in Monroeville? Because they're best, they're the best. They're wonderful facilities. People do rent them, even if they're not residents in Monroeville. Parking spaces are all over these places. We got all kinds of resources. We got to take care of, beautiful picture of the Peace Pole there at Community Park West. Lots of things going on in our parks. We have a dog park. We could easily expand that. It's one of the most heavily used, and it requires a lot of maintenance because of its heavy use. BMX track, some of you are familiar with those, botanical gardens and on and on. Again, I mentioned the acres. We've got undeveloped parks and just our open space. Programming, Paul's here. Our director of Parks and Rec, we had, we're closing in on 2,000 people participating in summer camps and all of that and how you do that. Pavilion rentals, again, very high. We bought a convention center. The convention center has thousands of visitors. Hotel rooms are full because of it. And the thousands of dollars multiplying through our region because of that convention center. It's part of the capital budget, but I want you to understand, we won't be using taxpayer money to match the grants. Monroeville, by virtue of the law, is recipient of the hotel tax that, from the nights that are stayed here in hotel, in the hotels in Monroeville. We'll be using that to match, but we will always be the applicant. Remember, by buying it and making it a publicly owned building, it enabled us to get the grants that Oxford would not be able to get. And so it has to, it's our, it's our building. It will be included in our plan, but it won't be the general fund matching those grants. It'll be the combination of the hotel tax and other resources that we need to keep that facility monitored. Many of you guys realize, whether it's the IT system, the AV system, the security system, it's pretty dated there. We've got a lot of investments we need to make, and we've got a great team at Visim Monroeville to help us. So look at the capital improvement program that we've discussed a little bit already this evening. Again, it's all about looking into the five years, beginning with this year. The fire tire, the guys working there, and I think it might be Logan in that one picture there.
That's the range.
I'm sorry, the range. That was, we were building the range. That was a Mike Strong picture. I'm trying to think who took that one for me. You know, this is in alignment with mission, vision, values. You'll get tired of me saying that, but you will come to maybe know them and kind of see what they mean, and hopefully they resonate with you. But it's about the desired outcomes. Remember, I talked about sweeping the floor. We're not just busybodies here. We get things done in Monroeville, and we have real outcomes, and we measure those. He's going to be about, it's all about best practices, the GFOA. We have to do these things because things cost a lot of money. And as we're learning with this traffic light out here, things don't always come as quickly as you order them. I had a call from a resident who wondered, when were the stop signs going away? And when I told her when they were going away, she was not pleased. Well, she shared with me a lot of thoughts, but one of her thoughts was, stop signs working pretty well, but she just wished the traffic light was back. Yeah, when they're polite, it's excellent. Sometimes a knucklehead might come through and they're not. These are for, we also talk about non-recurring things. There's things in the plan that you just don't buy often, like municipal buildings, which we're in. It's a 25-year-old building, this building is. We've talked a lot about the length of assets and the different things that are involved. These are tangible assets. These are what we now can show depreciation over time and have good accounting of our resources. You know, studies are also included. These are non-frequent, might do new zoning awards. We, we need to update our online code, our Ecode 360 environment, so we have a piece of the capital program to do that. Again, when you look at the GFOA, it's, it's comprehensive, it's long-term, and I won't bore you with that. We discussed this in this next slide in June, and just want to emphasize, on your left are the reoccurring items. We're always going to buy police vehicles every year. We're going to have some Public Works vehicles to buy every year. Not the same one, but we're going to replace part of the fleet. But on the right are those longer terms, the things we talked about, you know, building a new Public Works building, building and expanding a building. These are infrequent, but they're addressed. They're, they're costs, and they got to be addressed as well. 45 million, I've already mentioned this. When you look at this, about 42% is infrastructure. Infrastructure are the roads. We're a road owning and road maintaining entity. All authority emanates from the road, and that's our responsibility. We've just mentioned the light out here. Not only are we responsible for the roads we own, but we're responsible for the facilities for roads we don't own. You might be surprised that part of our 42 traffic lights included the traffic light at 42 and 22, 48 and 22. That, that traffic light has what, 37,000 vehicles a day on 22, another 8,000 to 10,000 on 48? That's a state road and a US highway, but it's our traffic light. We stripe it, we cut the grass around it. When the light burns out, we're up there with a boom truck fixing it. And we pay for the electricity. So about 42% of the, you can see the vehicles make up about 31% of the cost. I already mentioned the 327 vehicles or machinery that we operate, 150 of those being vehicles that are registered and drivable. And then the building costs, you know, the roofs, the HVACs and all of those. What's in your wallet? That's what this is about. This is the most important piece of the puzzle that we've been discussing for months because you're only going to get as much as you like. You or your wife or your spouse might want to do this for dinner tonight, but it's what's in your wallet. Let's look at that. So we'll begin with the general fund. I've already mentioned, like a train, it's the engine. It's what pulls everything along. Everything goes where the general fund goes. The general fund's well, all's well. General fund's not, everything's got to be dialed back. So when you look at 2014 to 2024, revenues were about 7% during that period. So if you insert the 2014 revenue number from Monroeville and run through the inflation calculators that you can get online, for example, at the Federal Reserve, we're about 7% higher than inflation. That means revenues have been pretty healthy. And that has been because of the business tax primarily, quite frankly, the business tax revenues. As I've mentioned earlier, in December and last November, real estate has been flat. The real estate value in 2014 was less than the value of the total real estate in 2024. You see the assessments. Allegheny County's in crisis in parts of it because people are getting new property assessments and reducing the value of their property. Good news for all the property owners, hard news for us because that erodes our ability. But what's happened in this chart is revenues were higher than this, and expenses twice overcame revenues. And quite frankly, last year being the biggest example with the purchase of the convention center. Pay attention to the way this slide works because I'm going to be overlaying other elements as I move through. This one's the general fund revenue and expenditures, 2014 through last year, unaudited, and then projected 2025 through 2030. We look at the heart of the presentation, it's about fund balance. I really always say to local government officials, and I've been doing local government official training for almost 30 years now, is you got to understand your fund balance. We've got money in the bank. You know, get hung up in the weeds, know the big picture. And this is one of the biggest pictures, understand and look what's happened to your general fund balance. By virtue of not having a capital improvement budget each year, you've had the luxury to increase your fund balance to the tune of in 2021 and 93% in 2023. In 2022, we did a do-to, do-from, and we kind of drew the general fund balance down a little bit. But what this is saying is, you know, the best practice normally for many communities is 10%. Some communities, it's 15%. We want to be at 20%, but we were historically running, you know, 50, 60, 70, 80%. Wouldn't say that's great. But when you fail to plan, you plan to fail. And what that has meant is we've paid premium prices on products, including broken HVAC systems, leaking roofs and failing equipment. Many of you read the Tribune review recently. They decided to hire a manager of their fleet because they realized they were paying too much because they were waiting to things break before they got around to addressing it. So where you guys are going to change that by adopting the plan next month, this will change. You have healthy fund balances, and you will prudently take care of needs and manage your resources well. Capital expenditures, this is remarkable. In 2014, 2.7% of the total of the expenses, 2.7% of expenditures was spent on capital. The paving that year was atrocious. It was about a mile in paving. We'd do about three to seven miles. We did about a mile that year. We really, and it wasn't because the fund balance was low, it was because we just didn't have a plan. And what hadn't, what you can see here is in three, it was 3.2% in 2017, that was another low year. Last year, we bought a convention center, so it was big, 10 million. And again, as we're working through, we're proposing in 2020 million again, that's the catch-up from deferred capital planning and that's spending our reserves down to do that. Bond payments, this is wonderful, right? Because you went from bond payments, which were 14% of your expenditures in 2014 and you'll be out of debt at the end of next December. December 2026 will be our last payment, I think, for the bond issuance that began in 1996. From 1996 to 2026, Monroeville's incurred that, which is typical, not unusual, but we'll be complete with that at the end of next December.
What is that current payment per year?
1.4 million and next year will be 1.4 million. And I think Josie, you mentioned that's in two payments?
Yeah, the principal's paid in June and December. I'm sorry. Interest is paid in June and December.
So now, but let's, but not to, not to sound so excited like, oh boy, we got extra money. Okay, like, let's not get too far ahead of the, the plan. Do that too, because that can also help us in the future in the operating side of this too.
Jared gave me a portable mic, look out. Can you pass these down, please? Jared, I'm going to move on to the center of the screen, something, because this wasn't included in the slide deck, but it was just something I think is valuable to understand. And I'll move back to the podium, sorry about that. Okay, thank you. So there's a handout that I gave to you that hopefully you have enough of. If not, I'll try to give you some more. Run out. So this is a combined percentage of expenses that we incur for debt and capital expenditures. I apologize, I didn't take the whole power. How many are missing up here? So again, we're trying to track a percentage of the expenditures annually. And what I did was combined the debt and the capital. Many of you know or have heard for real estate that you want to look at about 30% of your household income should be to your mortgage. Some of you are higher than that and some of you by virtue of vehicles and maybe consumer credit debt have a lot more of your budget going to debt payments. But you're familiar with the concept of a third of your household budget going to your mortgage. It's a kind of a rule of thumb. Well, the rule of thumb for local government is that, that 25% of what you want to be spending combined in a healthy community for debt and capital. And what this does, and again, I, I won't take you to the slide, I want you to focus on your handout. Is you can see the numbers. We didn't have the plan and we weren't buying a lot of capital, but we had debt and we had to take care of that. So just to point out, in 2015, 26% was the combination of capital and debt that year. So remember the 25% best practice? You never want to go below, below 10%. If a community's investing less than 10% of its expenses into its capital assets, it's going to find itself in a bad way over time. You gotta have some floor and you have some ceiling. The floor is 10, the ceiling's 25. You can see how five-year projection. What you'll be adopting in August, there's one year where we get close to 10. And that's a year because we see a flip in a slide I'll show you in a minute, just to reaffirm how these all work together. Where we see expenses will outpace revenue. And in order to prepare, prepare for January 1, 2031 and having 20% in the bank, you better start mining what you spend and recalibrating expenditures. And that's why we're dipping to 10% in that year. We, we're hoping we can do 17% in the request the following year. Remember, these aren't fully funded years we're talking about. Not like we're now fully funded and next year fully funded and projected in 2027 to be fully funded. So I want you to keep this in mind. This is very important thing to understand. We're going to be within those ceiling, 20 that is the combination of your debt, which we will have zero coming in 2027 and your capital investments. Any questions on this? Because this is an important thing to understand.
Why would you wait till we're broke before we start to worry about what we're spending? Why wouldn't we start that now?
So that's exactly what we're doing. We're drawing down excess fund balance, taking care of pent-up demand from no capital plan to a point where I'm still saying we're spending 10%. That isn't a fund balance number. Don't mistake this for a fund balance. The fund balance in 2028 will be about 30% of that year's expenditures. So we're going to have a healthy fund balance. This isn't, this is just basically showing you, we're able to buy a lot over the next saved a lot. We've saved a lot. Why did we buy a convention center? Because we had a nearly 100% fund balance. And we're taking that fund balance gradually down to a floor of 20% and we're going to try to hold it. Like the Fed tries to hold interest rates or, or inflationary rates, you try to adjust things. And so what I'm showing you is a decrease of, of it. Now, if you look at our plan, that's the lowest expenditure, that's a pretty low expenditure year relatively. The 45 million we're proposing to spend in the end of this year and the next five combined, six years, 45 million. A lot of that's in the front three. And then we have a heavy on the last year. That's a heavy expenditure year. So what we're trying to do, Mike, is make sure we begin January 1, 2031 with 20% of the bank. So this is just showing you a percentage of the combination of debt and capital expenditures. So that year will be spent expenses will be going to capital purchases. Remember what I showed you before? We were down to 3% in 2014, 3% in 2017. This 10% is, we, we weren't at all at that level from 2014 to 24. Thus, the increase of the fund balance, thus building up reserves. Because we were not steady like a ship, you know, or whatever your mentality is, you know, easy as she goes, just replacing as things aged out. Replacing as things aged out, you know, having a plan, we accumulated, we benefited.
Would it be safe to say then, let's just say this year's budget was what $43 million and change?
Something like that.
Forty-one or forty, well, in, in that range, okay, to do that. And we are well over that, we're close to 50 some odd percent in the fund balance of the value of the of, of our budget. Simple numbers, near to his last 20 somewhat, we need to do that. So I guess eventually we're going to try to get to, if our budget stays in that 40-some million dollar range, down around eight million or 10 means then, you know, we're not going to keep adding up again like we have in the past by going, paying as we go. We'll be paying across these five years, those numbers that
So let's go to the next slide and look in your slide deck at slide 68. And then if Jared can advance that for the people in the audience and the people at home. So what I did in this slide was take all of the slides that had previously and laid them together. You have your Y and X axes and you have on the left there, $60 million kind of at the top to give you a frame of what this is. And then the years 2014 through 2030. Again, we modeled 2031, but it's not we modeled 2031 so we knew how far we could go in this. We, so we could begin the year with 20% in the bank. So the top two lines are revenues expenditures. That's what you adopt every December. And right now, as was mentioned, you know, you can kind of see by gauging the lines there where things are at. It's about a $41 million. This year, we, we've, we passed a budget that was depleting the general fund balance because we thought there would be more expenses than revenue. We're modeling it now and you see the numbers on the green sheet. We likely will be really close to not having to dip into the general fund balance just to get through the general fund, which is kind of good news, right? We had a little higher expenses or revenue than we thought and our expenses will be at or below what we projected. But, but look at those two lines. For the next few years, we're going to have more revenue slightly than expenditures. But then that will change. We use the number of projection models to figure this out, including our contracts, which have already been negotiated. But we used the information from the Federal Reserve, Cleveland and Atlanta to kind of get an idea what local government inflation rates will be. And we, we really were modest on, on revenue. We look at about a 2% revenue increase and more or less a 4% expenditure increase. That's why the divergent crosses in a year five. And what we think is 2030 is going to be an interesting year because that's when the Monroeville Mall redevelopment will be complete and fully through the cash register and the assessments. It's likely to go dark in 2027, somewhere in the spring. And in some process of timing, the offline I don't even know what that looks like. That will affect your earned income slightly, but not much. Real estate a little bit, but it's going to affect your business tax to a degree. But it's going to come back like the rising sun. Walmart alone, their grocery seeds will probably match everything that's there now. And so in 2030, which we're just being very cautious, right now I'm showing you 2030 is going to have more expenses than revenue. I would not be surprised come 2031, Lord willing, I'll be here then, we'll have more revenue that year than we do expenses.
So you're saying from, from this projected model, if our budget is 47 million at the time, which it's on here too. We have had a successful year, we've, for an operating budget and capital purchases that we figured out over a longer period of time. And then we finished the year with a, a fund balance of close to
Attempted to do is create a very conservative model to work in with the thought that, you know, this could be a very big thing for Monroeville. Half a billion dollars is going to be invested by the world's largest corporation in our community. And that will have a multiplier that we won't see until 2030. This plan without taxes, without, you know, new debt gets you to 2030. So we're, we're going to, as we get closer to those years, we'll have a better handle. Now remember, those years are not fully funded. Just look at that here in a minute. Any questions on this?
I mean, is my analogy, is my, you know, breakdown of that correct? We're successful if that's what we show at that particular time.
You know, but what, again, the model we're trying to build is not very healthy growth in revenue and a more aggressive growth in expenditures. Just what it is. But, you know, it's going to be approved every December. That is the general every August, the capital, which we'll have another chance to look at this next year for the years 2027 through 2031. And again, I can't emphasize this enough, council, these are drafts that in August will be final. They will be changed based on your input. We'll sit down for hours like we did on Monday with you, Mr. Williams, you know, we'll one-on-one go through every sticky mark you got. That's the best way to do it. And then the final product will be the reflection of whatever input we're able to do through this process. Funding is important. It's about 72% funded. In other words, it's a 45, 40, 45 and a half million dollar need. But when I get to the years eight, nine and 2030, they're not fully funded years. What does that mean? Well, maybe revenues are better than we thought. Maybe things cost less than we thought. Good luck with that. Maybe we're successful with grants. We're not able to do, I can't write a grant for something I'm buying in the next month or two. You need lead time. But grants aren't something we're, we're giving you wishes here. But if I don't have a plan, it's going to be harder to get grants. Council in a year or two might decide to go into debt or might decide to do bond financing or, you know, do a tax increase, whatever. But here's the way it works. Right now, if stuff is as planned and there's no money for it, just like at your house, we gotta wait till next year, you know, do we do a vacation or braces? Well, how bad's Junior's teeth? That's what we'll have to do. Mr. Hugus, is it this or that? And you've done it. You've, almost 30 years here you've worked. And Mike, you've done it. You know, you've been involved. You've guys done it at firehouses. Sometimes you say, can't get it this year, guys. Got to make that ambulance get another six months, another year. It's the way this will operate. So it's not doomsday, but I got to reflect the accuracy. Here's better years for full funding. Expenses by year, the, the year that we have that 10%, go back to that slide, that's the handout, that trough year, we're only spending four million that year. That's why it's only 10% of the expenditures. It's a math thing. It's not that we're bank, you know, we're, we're failing. It's just we're spending less. It's just the way the, the models work out. The department heads are really pent, they have a pent-up demand that we've not met. And that's why we have to, that's why the first couple of years are seven, almost eight million this current year. Nearly 10 million next year, six and a half, eight million, then drops to four and then five for a total of 45. Just a couple of things here, it's fully funded. This year, next, that means you have the money in the bank and you can get this stuff. It's projected to be funded in that's good news. That's a big heavy year. It's a heavy lift that year. A lot of equipment we need to get that year. It's, you know, 80% of the entire CIP is in these years and ready to go. We talk about general fund, a couple of things there. The fund balance, we began the year with over 18. You know, nearly 20% of our expenditures, or yeah, nearly 50% of our expenditures were, was in the bank to start. We, we don't need to have that much. It isn't necessary. We can go down to 20% and still be very, very comfortable. So we, we talk about how to do that. Beyond the general fund, you adopt a plan with the talented, hardworking staff like Estok, Hugus, all the staff you've got here tonight. MK is not able, Dr. Lang is not able to be here with us tonight. Public-private partnerships, selling assets. We have land that we might be able to sell. Fees for services. We might think of the alternative revenue streams, selling our services to recover stranded costs. There are so many things that we might be considering. Why? Because we got to be great. We got to be sustainable. We don't want to wind down the community. We want to, you know, be the, the Monroeville of tomorrow that's greater than the Monroeville of today. So that's got to be creativity. It's got to be through adoptive, long-term plans. You know, look at the comparisons. In this five year, we're looking at an eight-year average of eight million a year. From 2014, we did about three million a year. Most, a lot of that went to roads, but you see on some of the road schedules, we really didn't maybe keep up with the roads. We did one mile a road in 20 of way exceeded that in the last few years. So this is the general fund side of it. It's pretty straightforward. Questions, you certainly have plenty of time to ask them. Got a handful of slides at MS4 and it's pretty simple with MS4. MS4 was designed in 2019 to be a fully funded kind of enterprise account, if you will. It's a utility. We charge residents and businesses for the fee and we provide stormwater services, flood reduction, pollution control services. So we've talked about the best practice of 20%. That means about $660,000 needs to be in their bank. And as I told you last month, they have about 12 million in the bank now. Part of the reason why is the original budget was designed to build a new building. Okay, and that is accumulated. There was dollars set aside in the original budget to build a new building. And that's accumulated and it's compounded, plus we've deferred some things through there and we have that fund balance. So what we're proposing, and again, this is from your feedback, to build an MS4 building and do it now. To get it started, get it designed and get it going. We have 10 million to do it, so no new rate increase. If it happens to be over 10 million, you have the ability to borrow. You have about $200,000 annually that you could borrow, which would add a couple more million to it. The way we're kind of envisioning it, which we don't have a study completed yet, but we've got to do, I know it's going to cost money. We've got to do some drawings, we've got to do some feasibility, we've got to figure out exactly how and where and what we can get with 10 million. But I think, Mr. Hugus, that's our marching orders. Unless council is willing to right now say, hey, no, wait, we want to go and look at look at the revenue necessary for that debt. This is what we're doing. $10 million in the MS4 budget to do an MS4 building. Any questions on this?
Do you think we need a $10 million building?
I don't know exactly what we need yet, but I think what we're going to do, I don't want to say it's enough or not enough. That's just not prudent for me to say. We need a building to last because it's a valuable asset that we maintain and we're not looking to go out of business. $500 million is being invested by a private developer in our community. We need to be able to serve them. And so I don't know, Mike, it could be a 12 or 14 million dollar building. I don't want to say it's too much or too little. It'll be a good building. You'll be involved in it. You'll be involved in the letting of the contracts, the bids and paying for it. So you won't be taken out of it, right? This is just the plan part. That real part will be the votes and the decisions to award it is that we end up specking out and building. Yeah, I don't want to give, I don't want to be wrong on that one. We talked about the big two, just they're in the plan, but not funded in the plan, not including in plan totals. Remember those two alone were over $50 million. We're not looking at this point relocating the public works. There's no political support to do that. Quite frankly, we'll probably be building the MS4 building with the thought in mind of how we can improve the campus where the public works is at Star Drive currently, right now. And if you're familiar with A, remember there was A, B, C and D. A, you might want to familiarize yourself with that concept, that Star Drive, what does that look like? But again, it's too early to say what we'll end up doing and how it'll end up looking. Neither is in there. I've said this for you before, I'll say it again, you can't be full you can't have Salem Township taxes and Monroeville services. Costs. But you know what? The businesses are here. They come and they keep opening. Look at the investment of Aldi's. I understand that developer was from Chicago and if they could, would have bought all the way through to the John Nap building and the Elmers, you know, fish shop. They wanted to do the whole side of the road there. Why? Because they know this is a market that's still a prime market in the Pittsburgh metro. It's worth investing in, worth enough to, the largest corporation in the world is buying a half a million dollars, putting half a million dollars half a billion, I'm sorry, 500 million. Wow, it's crazy. Can you get the number right? Fortuitously, for saving money over the years, we were able to buy a convention center. I'm emphasizing this one more time because there's some mis, there's misunderstanding about the convention center that I want to set. The $6 million came out of a piggy bank marked Monroeville Capital Purchases for vehicles and buildings. Great decision. The multiplier, who can calculate? I'm not able to right now, but I'm sure it's high. 20,000 hotel rooms a year. But once you understand, we entered into a lease. We own the building, Visam and Monroeville manages the lease, Prospera does the, the handling of the day-to-day, the, the cleaning, the, make sure there's drink and toilet paper in the bathroom, all that stuff. Last year, they gave us a first payment, which was the fourth quarter of 2024. If you extrapolate that into four quarters, you can basically figure we might be able to do $300,000 annually from that lease. Now, if you wanted to go to the bank and get a $6 million because we had to buy HVAC systems immediately after purchasing it for $5.6 million. That's, this table will show you. If we did a bond, we would need $461,000 to pay the bond in 20 years, costing us 9.2 million with a total of 3.2 million interest paid. million with a total of 3.2 million interest paid. The second one is a typical bank loan at 6.8%. You would need to spend $500,000 a year paying $11 million with 5 million in interest. I'm giving you this slide to help you understand. The revenue from Prospera through Visim Monroeville needs to pay back the piggy bank marked capital purchases, but don't be deceived, it's not able in 20 years, and probably wouldn't in 30 years, to be paid back the investment. Your investment is paid back by the business success, by the multiplier of the, of the, you know, Comic-Con and all of the shows that happen there. When they go to the restaurants, when they go to the hotels, that's where your comes. So I think there's a misunderstanding. You know, like, get that money and put it in the general fund. Don't put it in the general fund. That's just, those are responsibilities paid for by the real estate and other earned income tax and the taxes for the businesses. Take the money from the Prospera lease and just put it in the capital. And if it has great years and pulls in 450, wonderful. But look at the mortgage rates. You can't see that as an investment that you're able to say, we'll pay back in 20 years. You'll pay back indirectly through great business taxes, but not through the Prospera lease. So let's take the lease money and put it in the capital. Couple slides and I'm done. You, I'm not going to read these to you, and you're good to go. These are why we do capital planning. They're very high-level stuff. We do this to leverage our money. We do this because it's the best practice, doing the right thing and staying the course. We do it because grant agencies expect nothing less. You know, you can't go to the bank to get a business loan without a business plan. This is our plan. This is how we move forward. Things need to be done phased. They need to be bought at the best time. They need to be bought at discount, not at crisis. And you guys know all these things. Timing is on our side. We've got plenty of it. We won't take up much more of yours tonight, but we don't need to rush. I'm not asking you to rush this. In August, I want you to vote on a five-year capital improvement program that you can be proud of, and this community deserves. Next steps, pass the plan. We'll get started designing the MS4. We'll figure out what it costs, Mike. And then we'll go into the phasing of that. So we engage a consultant to make sure we get a good plan. We get, we move dirt and build. That's the orders. I think that's what you guys want. We'll build it for the future, though. I see it being built in a way that we will be able to take stuff out of the existing garage, move into there, and maybe start to remodel and renovate and refurbish the facility. Don't want to get too far down that road, but I'll tell you, look at option A. That's one that's been presented to you in the past, and start to noodle how that looks. You'll be involved at every step of the way. There will be no surprises. There'll be plenty of time to kick the tires. Slide from Marshall, we talked about this last week, I underlined it last month, we underlined the importance. Trying to come up with ways to right-size the community without totally alienating anyone is a different set of skills that's going to be the challenge. We are a unicorn. We offer six services in the combined that I'm not sure if anyone else does. Police, dispatch, refuse and recycling, a municipal library, municipal senior center, and an animal control officer in shelter. There's no local government that I know of, maybe than, other than Pittsburgh, in Allegheny County, or any surrounding county, who offers those six services. We're gonna have to think about how to right-size this. Some of those we may need to be cooperative with our neighbors and sell the services and share. Some of those we need to just enhance and get better at, to get better margins. Others of them, we might not be able to do as we've done in the past. I don't even know what that looks like. But Marshall served this community in part of the '60s, '70s, '80s, '90s, and the '00s. Five decades, from an intern in 1967 from the University of Pittsburgh after his service in Vietnam, came back as an assistant manager, served as a manager for almost another 10, and came back for another 10. He was part of five decades. He was here during that growth period of the interstate boom, post-World War II growth of Monroeville from 7,000 to 30,000 people. And he said it in 2010, it's going to be a challenge, and it's your challenge to right-size the services, to be able to keep Monroeville well-positioned. Questions?
Just for the record, Alex, I don't give a damn about other communities, and what they do and what they have and how they do it. I only care about this community.
I will continue to benchmark because we need to know how they do it.
I'm just telling you my thing.
You need to know, too, that services we have are outstanding.
I know that.
And not everybody has chosen to do all that you've chosen to do. And that may be why their budget's less.
Thank you, sir. Much appreciated.
Thank you for your time and your patience. Thank you to the public. Thanks to staff, Josie. I love working with you. You're very dedicated and hard-working, and I can't say enough about the effort you put in this. Paul, same to you. You turn around the request very rapidly, and it's always, doesn't need to be double-checked. It's run, you know, it's right the first time. Thank you.
And Alex, while you're there, just to take it out of order just for a second, too, any other things on your monthly report or additional things in our reports of staff?
I will be away next week. I will miss a very important day for Jared and the communications team. I will be away for 4th of July, unfortunately. It's the two best days in Monroeville, or Memorial Day Parade and the 4th of July Parade. Thank you, Joe. He'll be up at 5 o'clock in the morning on his quad, getting everybody organized, like hurting. But look forward to meeting with you each one-on-one to go over the details of the plan and get her done for August. Thank you.
All right. So again, out of order, let me go back to Mr. Ratcher, reporter, municipal staff.
I'm gonna yield my time away.
Okay. Okay, do that. MK's not here this evening, but we do want to think about her because she is walking for her PhD, I believe, this week as well.
Yeah, she's doctoring.
Yep, she's doctoring to do that, too. So congratulations to her. Mr. Hugus?
I'm good.
Really?
Yeah.
That's really lovely.
Thank you.
Josie?
I've already fucked enough tonight.
Well, much appreciated.
More than I usually do.
But we do appreciate it, Josie. I know it's been a lot of hard work and for all of you and stuff, too. So that is, it's great and things are happening. So, reports for our council members as well. I'm gonna start.
Thank you, Eric. So we touched on most of what I was gonna say a little bit earlier. Fourth of July Parade, it will be livestreamed. Jared will be livestreaming the Fourth of July Parade and the fireworks as well. So if you're not able to make it out for either one of those two events, we got you covered. Next, the, we talked a little bit about this already, but the block party, I think it was a great success. I think Mr. Hizzy, Mr. Stevenson, you guys are in for a treat. It actually was pretty fun. You get a couple of people that are up bending your ear a little bit, but it's worth it. I think I had a great time, even with the weather, and the weather was a challenge that day. It was, it was actually chilly in the middle of June, but I think it worked out great. And thank you, Paul, and thank you, Danielle. They both did a great job setting everything up, getting the food truck out there, and attending some more of them. And thank you for the, to the fire department and the police for showing up as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Williams, light it up, my friend.
Yeah, I want to commend Alex and the staff for the material that they put together in the two books. A lot of ours went into this, and it's well-done, and I will thank you and your staff for your efforts. Another thing is, although the sixth ward does not have a fire station, we rely on number one for emergency needs. They, as all of our fire departments, do a great job. Personnel do a great job for Monroeville and also surrounding communities. So they just don't serve Monroeville. Sometimes they're called to Pitt Karen, Penn Hills, some, and they're more than willing to hop out of bed, get on their trucks, and do this. Chief Belts and his crew is having an open house on Sunday, July the 6th, 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. And Jared, if you'd show that short video, please.
I'm Matt Belts, Fire Chief, Monroeville Volunteer Fire Company Number One. You ever wonder what it's like to be in a firehouse? Well, now's your chance. We're opening our doors to you. Section 1 is hosting a free, family-friendly open house event where you can climb in the driver's seat of a fire truck, get a blood, or info on the importance of learning CPR. We even have fun games for the kids to enjoy. I said the kids. We'll also provide fire safety tips and even spark up the grill, offering up a little food and refreshment. Don't worry, you don't need to be in full fire gear to grill outdoors. Our guys are just a little extra. We hope to meet you at Monroeville Company One, 122 Elmwood Street, on July 6th from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. This gives you an opportunity to meet the volunteers that support your community, and also gives us an opportunity to connect with you.
Hope Matt has his equity card.
Yeah, I was a structural armorer for 25 years. I worked on US Steel buildings and some of the high buildings in Pittsburgh, and never had a fear of anything. But Chief Belts took me up, I didn't even know they still had fire poles, but he opened the door and looked at that fire pole. I was scared to go in there and go down that pole.
We tried.
So I looked down there, and the fireman was sitting down there. I says, hey, guys, how about a cup of your lane under that pole when I slide down this pole in case I slip? And anyhow, I had no intention of going down that pole.
We had our chance.
So come out in person and see what your donations do for our municipal donations in, if you haven't already done it. Our guys do a great job, and they're more than willing to go out of their way through these storms. They don't only put out fires, but they go out there and deliver food, generators, whatever they need to do to keep our community safe. Chief Belts, Belts is not only a chief of number one, he's also retired chief of the Navy. Chief Belts, would you like to say a few words? Okay, thank you anyway. Thanks for your service in the Navy and for our community, along with the other chiefs that are here tonight. Thank you very much. Yes, sir?
By all means, Matt, please, come on.
Come on, Matt, here's some of my folks.
I know you can talk.
I can use a nice bet. Yes, we're having an open house, and, you know, this is an opportunity for the community to go to the fire stations. You know, we haven't had many opportunities in the past for these events. So the fire chiefs have been discussing it. Five just had theirs last weekend. Six is gonna have one coming up later this year. So the fire stations want to open their doors so that the public, as well as council and any of members of the borough, can see what we do. We're all volunteer. Our EMS staff are paid. We have to, we have to provide any of a service, and we can't do that on a volunteer basis. We just do not have staffing for that. It's hard enough with the little amount of manpower that we actually have to support the fireside on a volunteer basis. It's difficult. There's calls all day and night. I think there was two alarms last night, if I'm not mistaken. So, so the EMS side is 100%. We have to pay people to do that. We just can't support that on a volunteer status. So, but as in the volunteer side, we want to open our doors so that people can see. We don't, it doesn't say volunteer on our fire trucks. We, that's probably something we should do in the future. Monroeville obviously owns the fire apparatus, the heavy apparatus. So I don't think that a lot of the community understand and know that we're all volunteer. So, you know, our, our day jobs are our day jobs, and then after work, we put on our uniforms sometimes, go to the station, and try to get our other work done. So it's not entirely another full-time job, except for some of us, but it's a taxing, taxing job. I mean, every day we're up there, especially the fire chiefs. There's always something, you know, communication of some sort. So, so it's our opportunity for you all and the public to come to the fire station, see what we have, what we do, what we, what we have to spend money on, some that, we have lots of technology that we use to investigate and deal with the firefighting and the EMS. So come see the place. Thank you. Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Matt.
So again, all the fire chiefs, thank you for your service. You guys do a great job, and I don't mean to admit any of you, but this is my go-to firehouse, although Sixth Ward does not have a fire station in it. And the only other thing is, I wish people, happy Fourth of July. You see my shirt, it's just a little reminder, it's coming up, and in my hat, too.
There we go.
Glasses.
No, I won't put the glasses on.
We gotta top your same. Bob, we need the glasses.
Need the glasses.
Glasses.
The LEDs might have worn out.
There we go.
There you go. But the Fourth of July is a great American holiday. It means so much, and it just tells you there's a lot of bloodshed that we could have a parade in the freedoms we have. And you need to remember, freedom is not free. Our people shed a lot of blood in the services. In fact, I want to commend a friend of mine who was in the Air Force. He's 98 years old. He's a, just, he lives over Beatty Point, so he is a Monroeville resident, and I just want to thank all of our people for serving in our military. And so, the only other thing is, may God bless, keep us safe over this holiday, and thanks for our police and our EMS people. Keep us safe and ready to go to work. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Oh, yeah, this is hard to follow. And everything he said, ditto.
Oh, boy. Mr. Crack, anything, sir?
No, I'm not gonna even try.
Not even gonna try, not even gonna try to come back up to that. Mr. Stevenson?
I'm gonna try a little bit.
Okay.
I was fortunate enough to attend Number Five's on Saturday, the open house. Personnel that was there were great people, from the chiefs on down. I did have one complaint. Somebody showed up and was eating hot dogs, and I think he has a shirt, and that was my ward, not his. But he snuck in and imbibed the food, you know? But it was great to see the equipment, how it's used, the personnel that are qualified to use it. I wish we had more. We don't, but hopefully we can figure something out to make that change in the future. Other than that, happy Fourth of July to everybody, and God bless America.
Thank you, Bob. So the gentleman's gonna get up really early on Friday.